Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Okay, it's 9:30, can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which we stand, one nation, under God, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Good morning and welcome to the October 4th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our thought for today is Proverbs 24 verse 17. "Don't rejoice when your enemies fall; don't be happy when they stumble, for the Lord will be displeased with you and will turn his anger away from them." And this morning our dog warden has our dog from the kennel.
Good morning. Today we have about a seven-year-old male pug. He's in kennel number 40. He's available for adoption today. This is not your style. We have 27 other dogs in the kennel, so come see us. Thank you.
And if we can, can we all just take a moment of silence for all the victims of the shooting that happened in Las Vegas this past week? Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Commissioners are proclaiming October 6th as Manufacturing Day and Lorraine County and Thugus will have their kickoff event that day?
Correct, Friday morning.
We'll do the annexation decision, the 36.15 acres expedited to annexation petition from Eaton Township to the city of Illyria. Attorney Kenneth Fisher and Attorney Dennis Navar agents.
Jerry?
It's at 9:40, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, it doesn't, we can do it now. It's not a public hearing. It's just a decision.
Oh, okay.
Jerry, we had a conversation yesterday about the map and the fact that the ability to read the map is impossible. I know I have a problem with going forward with that annexation because of that.
Well, I met with the engineer to try and look at the issue that had been brought up by Jason Manchin last week. In the process of doing that, at least, I was unable to read the map. I don't want to speak for the engineer. I think his conclusion was that he believes there is not an island, but it's very difficult to tell that by reading the map that was submitted. If you look at the maps, there's probably 10 words on it I could read. I can't read the legend. I don't know if you can. But I don't know how you make a determination that it's an accurate map when you can't read it. There's not a whole lot of law out there. There was a decision that came out of Green County. It's a Court of Appeals decision, so it is not necessarily binding on you, but it came out in 2014. It's kind of been the decision that everybody's following. You know, and that decision basically focused on one section, the revised code that talked about the description and the map. And it basically said, "Look, there can be substantial compliance for everything else, but you ought to hit that right on the nail." And it also said that you cannot amend after the original petition has been filed. So I understand there has been a subsequent map that is readable. But at least according to this decision, which is, at this point, the best law out there, the map and the description are supposed to be nailed and they're supposed to be nailed when you've filed it. You know, you are supposed to make a determination that an accurate map and description has been submitted. And, I mean, if you folks can read it and you think you can do that, then that's up to you, but the engineer said he couldn't read it, I couldn't read it. I can't even read the legend on the thing that's been submitted. So I don't know how you make a factual determination that the map is accurate. You're supposed to be able to follow the parameters and identify the parameters of the area to be annexed, as I was explaining to Matt. When I was in law school, I was a title searcher, so I know how, you know, I'm not an expert, but I at least know how to read those things. And I couldn't do it. So, and I, you know, I thought what was telling was last week when we were trying to figure out whether Jason's objections had any merit, we didn't use the map that they submitted. We had to get another map out. So, like I said, it's your determination to make whether you think an accurate map has been submitted, but I don't know how you can do that when you can't read it.
Madam President?
Yes.
You know, I, once again, took a look at the annexation map. I know I'm getting up in age, but I took another look thinking, "I'm sure I can eventually read this thing." With the glasses on, with the glasses off, couldn't read it. And, you know, as I was indicating to the clerk, you know, if I was being asked to sign a paperwork to buy or sell a home and couldn't read something, I wouldn't be signing it and I'm sure my attorney wouldn't be recommending that I sign it. You know, we had delayed things last week. I thought we were being very respectful and professional and respectful to process, asking that we get something clear. Now, I understand something clear has been submitted, but it's my understanding that if something was resubmitted, doesn't the clock start again?
Well, the issue is, and again, it's a Court of Appeals decision that is not our Court of Appeals, but like I said, if a Court of Appeals makes a decision that everybody thinks is wrong, usually, Matt, you were at the legislature, the legislature will amend it. So the fact that there's been no action by the legislature kind of is the acquiescence to the law out there. And that case law says that in this particular type of annexation, an expedited to, it's done when you file it and you cannot amend later on. So, at least based on the law that's out there, we're stuck with what was filed at the time it was filed.
But the new map that was submitted doesn't match the original map that was submitted. I'm not seeing that it's submitted as an Evidence Document B. Is that what it was? And dates at the bottom?
I gotta be honest with you, I didn't pay too much attention to the subsequent map because...
I mean, you know, when you look at a map, you should be able to hold both of them up and all the information that's on that map should be the same on both maps. And it's not.
So we have to make a decision, one way or the other today. So if we were to deny this, would they just then have to start all over? And what was that?
Which is, you know, something, again, I suggested, and I looked at my notes back at September 1st, that it might be best to try and clean this up. Yeah, I mean, you know, we all know that they can resubmit, they will eventually get, you know, we did this with Grafton and, you know, they resubmitted.
I mean, the way that the annexation process has been set up, especially this type, is to make it real simple. The only thing you have to do is submit information that can be read. And I'm not able to read the map.
That makes it pretty simple. Do we need to take comments or just go make the motion?
May I be heard, please?
I think I would prefer to see you.
Sure. Okay. We need your name and address first before...
Certainly. My name is Kenneth Fisher. Business address, 2100 Terminal Tower 50 Public Square, attorney for the petitioner. Firstly, in regard to the statutory requirements, 709-021 and 709-023, there's been no additional territory added. The map itself and the legal description has been confirmed pursuant to September 1st, 2017 correspondence to the Lorraine County Commissioners from Peter Zwick, PEPSs, Chief Deputy Engineer, who I believe is in the audience today. And again, I know this is part of the record, it's been submitted in the second paragraph, "We report," meaning the Lorraine County Engineer, "that the legal description accurately describes the perimeter of territory." Now petition for annexation, and I believe Mr. Zwick is in possession of the full map that that has been submitted. There's been no additional territory added, and that is what Mr. Innis is referring to. The legal description is accurate, the map is accurate, no additional territory was added since the time the petition, the expedited type two petition, was submitted to the Board. The Board of Commissioners is respectfully required to make a decision based upon the face of the petition, which is sufficient as a matter of law. And again, Mr. Zwick is in the audience. And again, I reference the September 1st, 2017 correspondence. The legal description accurately describes the perimeter of territory. Now petition for annexation. No additional territory has been added since the time the petition was submitted. The map on its face is sufficient as a matter of law and fact.
Mr. Innis?
I guess I would just challenge anybody to come up here and read that map and read it. And it's not just the description. It's, the statute says the description and the map, and the engineers indicated that it's not legible to him.
May I respectfully ask when? He said it's not legible to him.
Last week.
I believe it is legible on its face.
You don't want to read it. You don't want me to hand that to you right now to read it. You will not be able to read it. And I don't know who in the room has the best eyesight possible, but maybe you can read it, but can't read that at all. We made a simple request for you to bring us a map that can be read, and basically you ignored that request.
Well, they did bring subsequent...
But it's not the same map. It's not the same map.
Mr. Commissioner Lundey is certainly not ignoring our request. We're working diligently to address concerns of Mr. Innis, of the county engineer, of others that are interested in this proceeding. And again, respectfully request that you approve the petition as it has been submitted in full compliance with code requirements 709-021 and 023, and on its face is sufficient as a matter of both law and fact.
Peter Zwick, Chief Deputy Engineer at the County Engineers Office.
The map, were you able to read the map that they submitted with the original request?
No. Unfortunately, the original submission, which was the small illegible drawing, is not legible. And I stated that in the letter dated September 1st that was just mentioned.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Manchin, I'll give you a minute.
Yeah, if I may. Commissioners, Jason Manchin, Eaton Township Trustee, 10720 North Reed Road, Columbia Station, zip code in Eaton Township. Again, they're going to argue that at one point there was a letter drafted by the engineer that things were sufficient, but again, that's a guide. I would also argue, besides the map being illegible and we had to bring our own map to show you, again, there is the argument of the city completely surrounding territory in Eaton Township. They're going to argue that it's more of a balloon-on-a-string type deal, but the statute says completely surrounded, to the north, to the south, to the east, to the west. If this annexation happens, it will be completely surrounded by the city of Illyria. Also, as I stated last meeting, the legal description is not accurate, and with those arguments, those are almost three of the seven that are there to deny this. And plus the other arguments we had with the ordinance by the city of just maintaining parcels owned by Chestnut Ridge LLC, that would only handle X amount of feet in front of the property. There's no agreement to go on down the road, which, you know, the county presented to them from going to Dewhurst all the way to Durkey. We don't have that in writing. Of course, I'm going to get calls from our residents, where's the plow truck? Why isn't this road paved? This, that, where's the snow fence? I want a light at Bender and Chestnut because of Fieldstone, which is also a Illyria development. And there's other prior annexations prior to my time that still aren't even developed in the area, which would cause even further chaos. So I would respectfully ask you to deny this and that since the city of Illyria can come to these meetings, that they come to the meetings that we offer with both the potential developer, their attorney, the county, and the city. We all get together and work this out instead of just doing some hodgepodge thing where there, no one has answers after the fact. So, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
One final comment, if I may, before you vote. I know you've got a busy agenda, but one final comment. I would like to address the island issue, which is separate from the map. And again, my last point on the map, referring again to Mr. Zwick's September 1st, 2017 correspondence, he does indicate that a full-size map is required, not eight-and-a-half by 11-inch reduced. And that's what was resubmitted, a full-size map. It's the same map, it's just larger. So to say that the description of the territory contained in the original submission has changed is inaccurate. It's the same map, only blown up. Now, in regard to the issue of the island that trustee Manchin just referenced, there is no island. And according to 709-023E5, the unincorporated area of the township must be completely surrounded by the territory proposed for annexation, and it clearly is not. There's a parcel that's owned by the city of Illyria that is not part of the property territory to be annexed to the city, and there's frontage on this road in the township. So it is not an island. It is not surrounded. And we would like a separate finding on that issue, if you would, in addition to the map issue that Mr. Innis has discussed. Thank you.
Again, I would just like to say that that is a road right-of-way, that he is talking about, that parcel, not actual property that is in the city, so therefore it would be completely surrounded by the city. I don't see anything in the statutes that say the road right-of-way is part or not part of that. If you look at it as a whole, it's completely surrounded by the city.
Right. Gotcha. Well, we need to make a decision, so I would make a motion to deny, based on the fact that the map is not able to be read.
I would second that.
You would make a finding that it's not accurate?
A finding that it's not accurate.
Mm-hmm. I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I was waiting for discussion. I was just waiting for discussion. You guys going ahead.
Sorry.
As the other ones we've dealt with, and I understand we've gone through a lot of these expedited twos, and Jason always brings up valid issues as we go. We'll still have the sewer issue, and we're going to have a road issue, an agreement that things will need to be contingent upon taking care of. I know the city of Illyria is going to get this done. It always happens, just straightening up the paperwork, but based on the advice from our legal counsel, you know, it's something we have to deal with, and you see where the Board's going, so I would say go re-figure it and submit the paperwork properly and address the issues between the road concerns and your proper map. Eric, you've done this for years. You've been in front of us for a lot of things, and Tim, so that's about all we can do with it at this point.
I thank you. Thank you for your comments, Commissioner. And Eric, of course, is standing behind me and has nodded, and there will be a maintenance agreement adopted by ordinance, if it hasn't been already. I'll have Eric address that.
Well, I don't know that it matters at this point, but we...
You need to state your name here.
Eric Brunig, 131 Court Street, Assistant Law Director, City of Illyria. And yes, the maintenance agreement has been tightened up for last week. Again, given what the comments I'm hearing at this point, I don't know that it matters for this particular proceeding, but that just addresses the one issue. So we do have an agreement in place. Of course, as we mentioned last week, the ordinance requires us to maintain the road per the statute. This agreement would require us to maintain the road between, what is it, a little bit east of Dewhurst?
Dewhurst and Durkey.
To... No, not to Durkey.
Still water.
Still water. Still water. Thank you for my comments.
I'm going to call for a question.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Want to make sure I understood the motion?
I think that you had a thingy.
All right. I want to make sure I understood the motion. Okay.
Okay. Let's move on to resolutions.
Thank you for your time, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Under Resolutions, Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorize various personal actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I do have potential hires at Children and Family First Collection Center. I'd like to talk to the Board about those, and purchase of real estate, and two ongoing legal matters. All those topics will have a Sunset Act for Executive Session discussion, so I'd ask it's a conclusion of a regular Board meeting. We go into executive session, we talk about those matters that I've outlined. Thank you.
Thank you.
Notified Lorraine County Safe Harbor Inc., DBA Genesis House, a shelter for victims of domestic violence. They are eligible to receive funds in the estimated amount of $85,000 collected as part of marriage license fees, annulments, divorces, or dissolution fees pursuant to ORC sections 2303.201 and 3113.33 through 39.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Amendment Resolution 16617, approved September 28, 2016, authorizing a purchase service agreement with Medina County Shelter Industries, DBA Windfall Industries, WODSware, to provide a work experience program for supplemental nutrition assistance program recipients in fiscal year 17. Amendments reflect the end date will be December 31st, 2017, rather than September 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Sanitary and rental leasing agreement with Sensus USA Inc. and Sensus Spectrum LLC for the water meters at Pheasant Run.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under Mental Health, request auditor evaluation for five and 10-year renewal of the .6 mils to be placed on the May 8, 2018 ballot under ORC 304 and 5705.221.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioners, if I may just interrupt for a moment. Legislature amended the process that we do these, and it was effective September 29th. So the paperwork we got over had been started before then. So just so you're aware, we're going to have to add something. They're not big things, they just say you're supposed to say exactly what date the election is going to have and a few things like that. So just so you're aware, we kind of have a boilerplate resolution that we use, and we're going to modify that to incorporate the new things that just were passed in the statute.
I thought Kathleen Kern was here. I don't know. Oh, she is here. Did you want to come up and comment? The new director at mental health? Need to let everybody see who she is.
I didn't anticipate there'd be one coming, so we kind of, yeah, this just went into effect like a couple days ago.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Kathleen Kern, Executive Director at the Lorraine County Board of Mental Health. My business address is 1173 North Ridge Road East, Lorraine, Ohio. So I just want to thank Prosecutor Innis for bringing us up to date, and we'll certainly submit that paperwork and adjust it to be in compliance with the new rule.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, Grant Saul, ownership of K9 Hector to Special Agent Olin Marn. K9 Hector has been serving with Olin since February 24, 2013, and due to his age and performing daily activities, he will retire on October 9. Special Agent Marn will release all claims in agreement to identify the cost of $1.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez?
No additional comments this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Innis?
I do believe Prosecutor Will wants to come over to you and talk about an imminent litigation issue, and I think that's really all.
Good.
Thank you.
Commissioners' report?
Just a couple of things real quick. Thursday, I attended a conference in Columbus for the Stepping Up Initiative, and what that is, is trying to keep people with severe mental illness out of jail and the criminal justice system. Critical intervention team training is a major factor in addressing this issue, trying to get as many police officers and dispatchers and everybody trained in this to help address that. Friday, I attended a seminar about how the cloud works and how it could benefit people and businesses. Pretty interesting. Kind of like this kind of secret thing that a lot of people don't really know what it is. So it was a good learning experience. And then yesterday, we had our first ditch hearing for the Freeland Ditch Project. Seems to be that all the residents are in favor of that. They have had flooding issues in that area, so we had no, I don't think we had anybody say no or complain.
There was no way here.
Well, I mean, in writing or anything?
No.
Happy that's happening. Good. And then last night, Karen Schauer had a great Oktoberfest at St. Lads. The food was amazing. Hoagie did that, so congratulations to Karen. She does a nice job in Lorraine. End of my report.
Amongst those other things, Commissioner Lundey and I attended the 30th anniversary of the Negro Business Women's Dinner at Lorraine County Community College, well, luncheon. Again, a great turnout. Congratulations to them for 30 years. And Commissioner Lundey also did the roundabout ribbon cutting yesterday with Avon and North Ridge Road 83 and Mills Road, you know, which we'll see how it goes. I heard your comments on the radio this morning. Make sure you yield, so I think it'll be an adjustment, but, you know, a learning curve, but I think everybody, once they get used to them, I mean, I love them when you get to major cities. I mean, just get into Washington DC, and the car's tough anyway, but the roundabouts make it so much easier, so.
I think it's important to point out our partnership in that, too.
Too funny.
Yep.
Also, want to address Lorraine City Council the other night. They did a resolution against the Board of Commissioners, and they approved a contract for their steelworkers, who we've approved our contracts for our steelworkers. What I saw, the adjustment is it's been a very topic of conversation in articles as we're in negotiations on what happened to their healthcare. Thank Commissioner Kaskowski for getting all the information, but what they ended up doing, and is comparison from Lorraine County, they increased their family medical premiums by about 40% to their employees. They went from approximately 124 a month to 205 a month for the employees. Single premiums went from 51 to 80. They took out the vision premiums and the dental vision and the dental premiums, and the employees are going to pay 50% of both in 18, then 100% in 2019. They increased co-insurance from 1,000 for a single to 2,000 to a family, where ours is 61200, to 1,500 for a single, and 3,000 for a family plan, $1,800 more than us. And then you put a little caveat in here to save their healthcare plan, they will pay up to $500 for premiums on someone else's plan if you and your whole family get off our insurance, quote-unquote. So, just to bring up, as they want to talk about... So, I mean, just to bring up, as they want to talk about what we're doing here, just some of the things they did there, so. End of my report.
That's good information, that was adopted by council?
Lorraine City Council passed it, yes.
Same night, okay. Thanks for that information. Want to advise everybody, we have our final lakefront Lorraine County meeting that is coming up on Thursday, we've been working on putting together a lakefront plan and strategy for Lorraine County, we've come up with a number of concepts of things that would like to be done on the lakefront, that will help promote lakefront economic development and tourism. I think you'll find a lot of the concepts to be interesting, obviously, the devil's in the detail, which means when it comes to where the resources are going to come from to make some of these projects possible, obviously, will involve a lot of private and public-type partnerships. The consultants have been tasked with the responsibility of putting the pen to the paper, coming up with what projected cost could be for some of these concepts that we're looking at, and how we might move forward to secure either some grants or some funding to start to bring some of those to fruition. That'll be tomorrow night, 6 to 8 p.m. at Lakeview Park, would encourage the public to come out, see these concepts, give us the feedback, and it's your lakefront, so we want to hear from you. Also, I had the opportunity to attend Council President John Dietrich's fundraiser over there in Amherst last week, a very nice event, good turnout there. Congratulations Lorraine County Rural Electric, looking at using and experimenting some with solar power, which is kind of an interesting direction to be going. Congratulations, as Commissioner Kayla pointed out, to the Lorraine County section of the Negro Business Women, a great event, very well-attended, great speaker, and lots of blacks, black educators who were recognized, African-American educators, they are doing an amazing work with, with the youth in our community. Also, congratulations to Heritage Avon Lake, that's a historical society for Avon Lake, they held their chili cook-off, had seven different samples of chili, one of them was extremely hot, had a boomerang effect, came back on you later, but, but the chili was good, and I guess we have to wait till the paper comes out today to find out the company that was associated with each one of the, the chilies and find out who the actual winner is, so congratulations to them. Can't say enough about the parents and the students and the staff at Murray Ridge, we are just so blessed to have Murray Ridge in this county. For those of you who don't know the facts, I would certainly encourage you to have conversations with the parents of Murray Ridge students, the staff over there, the state is making a very strong effort to put those guys out of business, and we, I'm very upset by it, it's something that I was fighting when I was in Columbus, it's continued, especially under this new administration. The 50th anniversary event that they had, the kids put it together, helped, you know, they organized it, set up the tables, you should have seen the artwork of the students, just can't say enough about the commitment that's made to these individuals to help them through life and support them through life, so congratulations to Murray Ridge. The ribbon cutting for the roundabout at Route 83 yesterday was interesting, I think it's first roundabout, it is first roundabout we have in Lorraine County, when I was in Columbus-
Oh, LaGrange.
LaGrange, you're right, LaGrange, okay, yeah, I figured that one out, so, okay, I should be able to figure this one out. But anyhow, they had Mayor Gillock and, and Mayor Jensen got into the first vehicle to go around, and as soon as Mayor Gillock began, he started to turn left instead of going right, I think he did that deliberately, but it works out well, you just have to yield to the other folks, not try to speed up and get in front of people, and because you're making all those left-hand turns, it's not a NASCAR track, but, so, we'll see how it works out, but it opened bright and early this morning, had the ribbon cutting, as I pointed out, we partnered with Avon and North Ridgeville, a great partnership, and with our county engineer, we were able to bring about $250,000 to that project, the project was about a little bit over a million, I think, 1.2 million dollars, but anybody who's ever sat on Route 83 trying to get through that intersection at Mills Road, ugh, it was just a nightmare, so hopefully, this will, will resolve that issue.
I was really surprised how fast they got that done.
They, they did it quickly.
They really did that quickly.
Yeah. And congratulations Auditor Karen Schauer on a Oktoberfest fundraiser yesterday, that was good, and I saw my colleague tending bar back there, it was nice to see him working, friendly jab, friendly jab.
Yeah, friendly jab, that's okay.
October 12th, the 2 o'clock will be my records commission, board correspondence?
I move the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to address the board this morning? We just need you to state your name and, and where you're from, and then you can have three minutes.
My name is Mary Heck, I live at 41629 Hazelwood Street in Liria. I have some questions, I want to know why you have hired these security guards out of Michigan, and how much of my tax dollars is being wasted on this to guard nothing, really, these people aren't harmless. I want to know, why didn't you plan to go back to the bargaining table and settle this contract? It is affecting the whole community, it trickles down to even the smallest business, and then, I want to know, the people that are serviced there, the customer, the people that you service there, their daycare's been cut off, mothers depend on minimum wage jobs to get by, because you subsidize the daycare, the county does, so they can get a better job. They're being turned away at daycare daily because their vouchers have not been made. So, when is this going to be settled once and for all, and go back to bargaining table and bargain fairly with a group of hard-working, honest taxpayers of this county? That's all.
Do you, what, do you want, do you want to respond, do we, should we be responding? I know our-
You know what our position is.
Right. Yes, Jerry?
I'm waiting for you to respond to the lady. Obviously, you don't.
Well, we're waiting for them to-
You don't respond enough, and so I'm not amazed.
For the union to come and ask us to come back to the bargaining table.
Well, they don't have to ask, it's, bargaining is a two-sided event, you have a right to make that request, too. All right, my name is Jerry Donovan, 5109 Oak Hill Boulevard, Lorraine, Ohio, citizen and taxpayer. The lady ahead of me made a lot of comments that I was going to make, however, one thing I would like to take issue with, is Mr. Cordez seems to relish in the agreement that was negotiated in Lorraine. For his glorification, edification, and information, I would advise him that you're two different type of entities, you are a county, they are a city, it's like comparing apples to oranges, but then again, that's not unusual with these Commissioners. I also would like to know why we are hiring security guards? If it's because these people aren't in there, then obviously, I can only conclude, you don't trust the ones who are left in there, all right? And I could understand that, don't sit and shake your head, all right? I would also like to know the duration of the term of hire, is it indefinite? Do I not get answers either?
We're, we're trying to get to a point where we can get to the bargaining table and resolve this issue.
Well, I'm quite certain the president or the chairperson or the negotiators for the union are here, give horse some indication when you want to go to it. As I said, having negotiated a lot of contracts in my life, that is up to either one of the two sides to request a meeting, you don't have to put all the onus over on the union. You know, I'm going to say this, there was a gentleman called Edgar Bergen, he was a great ventriloquist, had one dummy to deal with, and obviously, it's very clear to me that Jim Cordez is three, thank you.
Mr. Cordez?
Yes, good morning Commissioners. My name is-
Can you, one second, please, isn't it, is it not true that we have asked the union to come to the table three times, and they have not asked us to come to the table once?
That is, that is not true, that is not true.
Can you please state your name?
Name and address.
My name is Marnin Kovach, I live at 3026 Meister Road, I am a Lorraine County resident and taxpayer. I have been to that office since the strike has implemented, twice, and sat in line, sat in a chair for three hours, not to have any response, wait, and get to the window, then they tell you, you need to come back, the phones don't work, the big schmule in the paper, they don't work. They worked before this all happened, how come all of a sudden? When is it going to stop that you're going to, stop attacking with the newspaper and start meeting with these people? These are educated men and women, I'm sure, that have many degrees and are working for well below their wage, that they could work elsewhere for, but they're working for the county and choose to work for this county, to represent the people from this county, and that apparently doesn't seem to be getting done. I'd like to know how many of them in here have degrees, they're being very much underpaid as to what all sits up here, you know, come on, they need to get back to the table, we've got children out there that need the help, and like you said, three times, whatever, three times, they've been three times already, how many more times do they have to go? How many more times does it have to be gone? How many more months? I'm sure they all need to be back to work. This is ridiculous, they all have small children, grandchildren, families to support, they don't have incomes like the people sitting here, nowhere near the incomes you people get.
Sir?
Ralph Nash, 38261 Chestnut Ridge Road, Liria, I'm here about the annexation. I don't believe that Liria needs to annex that property, it has enough property, it's abandoned right now, Broad Street, Cleveland Street, East Avenue, West Avenue, and Middle Avenue, and if it isn't abandoned, it's turned into a parking lot. They do not need to annex this property to virgin farmland for their benefit, for tax, for tax advantage, and I'm against this annexation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address the board this morning? Seeing none, I move that we go into executive sessions outlined by the Administrator and Assistant County Prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Liria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.